Good evening, everyone. I will officially open the Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting for February 21st. All members are present this evening and including we have our consultant from Piner Valley Planning Association Larry Smith who will be is on the agenda tonight anyway. And we'd also like to welcome our listening audience as this is our first viewing for Planning Board business. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a building permit submitted by...
Oh, one second. Just make the announcement that it's being recorded and broadcast live. It's required for the open meeting.
Thank you. I didn't know that, but I think you just made that announcement for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Seeing as you've been here on this situation before. Paul Mercandante has a building permit in front of us for forty-six Gilbert Road to sign off on to make sure that it is under the forty thousand square feet that would trigger a stormwater permit. So I will pass this plan along to the board for review. Paul or Jim, if you want to come up here maybe so we don't have to pass it down the way, then you could check it out from here.
Lot size one forty by three ninety-three.
Disturbance. What's that information?
Is that the common driveway they're coming in from?
No, I think the common driveway's right here. Was your one thirty dimension on that?
We'll have to clear just about all of it together.
Mark, are you familiar with this at all?
Yes. Yeah. So the board last year...
Go on and just go to the podium for me, please, and identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. Last year, there was an application for this piece of property for a common driveway, which was approved by the planning board. The driveway, and I'm not sure what plan you're looking at, will not enter through its frontage on Gilbert Road. It'll enter off of the existing common driveway that exists to the house that's located in the rear, which is Mr. Mercandante's house. The lot right now is a cleared lot. It was part of the old gravel bank on Gilbert Road. So I'm not sure if they didn't put a area of disturbance on it.
Just come up and take a look at this if you would.
Yeah, the lot measures fifty-five thousand square feet, so it has the potential to trigger the threshold, but it's unclear as to the clearing limits.
Right, this is a portion of the common driveway. Which, this is his sister's house, which exists in the driveway that we come into here.
The driveway is already constructed, correct?
Correct. The driveway's already there. And this is what that dash line is. That's the existing driveway, roadway that goes through the property. I'm not sure honestly what, how much they're gonna clear, if anything, in the front. Right now, it's clear, I would say probably within forty or fifty feet. Gilbert Road is, there's an intermittent screen that goes through here in the front. That's why it's called, it's common driveway.
I think it'll be helpful for us to see the area of disturbances.
So yes, we didn't really, this plan is for...
Yeah.
This isn't really, tell us anything about the house place need to clear. Step back here.
Yeah. Yeah, my opinion is we can't act on this. There's not enough information with this application. So I guess I would make a motion to, at this time, not endorse this permit, but request additional information from the applicant.
Specifically, the planned disturbance areas.
Correct.
Yes.
So you have a motion to table this until further information? Just deny it and have it resubmitted?
So moved.
Motion's been made in second.
So basically, we're looking for an area of disturbance, long as it's not more than forty thousand square feet. We have no problem, but it's unclear because the lot is bigger than that, so if we have that information, then we can move forward.
Yeah, the plan presented was insufficient for us, correct?
Yep, that's my opinion.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a second building permit that just came in this evening, from David Gartska, and it's for eight Woodmar Lane. Once again, if anybody wants to come up here and just view the plan, Paul and Jim. According to the disturbance on the plan, it's only twenty-six thousand square feet.
It's not for me. It's the disturbance with the...
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, so very lot. So if it's only like half that, then it's about like half of that. So, yeah, so it's not even close.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to endorse the building permit. The area of disturbance for this plan is listed as twenty-six thousand square feet, which falls below the threshold of forty thousand, so I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Motion's made in second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. I'm a voting property.
Four voting for, one abstention. Next, we have a informational discussion. Mark Reed, David Gartska, and Robert Cannon here about the possible development of ninety-nine to one oh-nine to one thirteen Glendale Road, Assessor's Map seven parcel five. Who would like to take the podium first? Just as a matter of decorum, anyone that comes to the podium, please speak and give your name and address for the record. And please try not to talk across the room, but through the podium and through the chair, and that will be helpful. Mark?
Okay. For the record, my name's Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys, two forty-one College Highway in Southampton. We're here with David Gartska and Bob Cannon to discuss with the board informally a piece of property that's located on Glendale Road. We have not submitted any plans of any kind to the planning board. We do not have any plans yet of what is being proposed on this property. Mr. Gartska is going through a due diligence stage to investigate the property and zoning and lots of options that he might have prior to him purchasing the land. He will be purchasing the land with a clear title when he does and if he does purchase the property. So the property in question is an eighty-five acre parcel of land located on the west side of Glendale Road, opposite Edwards or Edward Ave in Southampton. Along, along, it has two different areas of frontage. It has a frontage opposite Edward Ave of two hundred and ninety-eight point five-three feet, and then it also has an additional frontage at the lower portion or the bottom of the hill near the brook of a hundred and three point forty-five feet. Zoning is RN, which requires forty thousand square feet and a hundred and forty foot of frontage. So in looking at the town's zoning bylaw, looking at potential options that could be done and filed with the proper boards, mainly the planning board, would be a standard subdivision with a cul-de-sac not exceeding one thousand feet in length as a standard subdivision. Potentially, a cluster development under section eleven with a special permit from the planning board for, we are not even sure how many lots we're talking about at this point in time, because we haven't even gotten to that stage. Third option is a agricultural preservation subdivision. This bylaw was adopted in nineteen ninety at the annual town meeting, and it's still looking at the town's website, not enlisted in the zoning bylaws. And it really needs to, because it is an option for somebody that wants to do a agricultural preservation. And fourth option or set of regulations that might apply to this piece of property would be a standard, a subdivision with the inclusionary zoning bylaw. If the lots exceed nine, then you have to look at that section of the bylaw to look at affordable housing units for the, for the property. Any housing units ten or above fall under that jurisdiction. So I know that Mr. Cannon had a couple of questions regarding the inclusionary zoning bylaw. David's here to, you know, try to do a little fact finding and come up with potential issues that the planning board may see with what I kind of outlined as some options or some other options for the property. We're looking at probably the potential of a cluster development and looking at the site as a whole, having a great deal of the property as open space. Approximately fifty acres of open space out of the eighty-five is one option, potentially. So there's lots of different options that he has that, you know, he could do to develop the property if he moves forward with it. So with that, I can give it to Bob, and he's got some questions relative to the inclusionary zoning. Or answer any...
No, I will wait until the other speakers here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Turn it over to Bob Cannon.
My name is Bob Cannon, Principal of Cannon Real Estate Inc., located in one ninety-nine North Hampton Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. Working with Mr. Gartska, looking at options for the property. Dave's expressed an interest in working with your spirit of the law for inclusionary zoning, which would require ten percent of the lots to be affordable. Trying to deal with that in terms of a real nuts and bolts, what does that mean? So we obviously know that the income limit for the Southampton area, which is included in the Springfield, greater Springfield area, for a family of four is sixty-four thousand dollars as a family. And as you know, that's basically stretching for new housing. So it's a challenge, but I have to tell you in compliment, the planning board and the Town of Southampton, because it's probably the best inclusionary zoning that I've seen, working with a number of different towns. Most of them don't work at all. Once you find out the number of units that you can put in, you, and that triggers the inclusionary zoning, you automatically go less than, because you can't afford to do it. But you've got to make an attempt to try to create housing for people of all income levels, and David would like to try to do that with some input from the planning board as to how you would like to see this done. But to me, by being able to, it looks like there would be as many as two units that you could create on this property. The, just so I give you some hard numbers, when you talk about a two-story home, which most likely this would be, the cost per square foot, including everything, runs somewhere around two to two-twenty per square foot. That includes everything. Includes the land, includes the septic, includes all of that. For a ranch, we run two-forty to two-fifty. When you look at what a person who makes sixty-four thousand, or a family of four who makes sixty-four thousand, they can afford a mortgage of about two-hundred and eighteen thousand based upon a forty-eight hundred dollar tax bill. So two-hundred and twenty thousand dollars falls way short of what the current cost is going. There are ways to do it, but you've got to be creative. The way you wrote the bylaw, the inclusionary bylaw, if you're creative, you can actually do it with what we call a condex. A condex is a duplex owned, but not a condominium. So essentially, they own the land in common. Each owner owns a unit itself out of two, and they actually have backyards. And you can make it look like it fits in, like the rest of the houses, which you want to do. You can't build something that's so small that ends up hurting the rest of the neighborhood. But you could, you could do it if, if the board is willing to work with the builder in terms of a special permit. I believe it requires a special permit, an RN. And that would create the ability to create two units. The two units would cost somewhere in the order of two-seventy to two-seventy-five. That's cost per square foot. So with a buyer who comes down, if they make sixty-four thousand, they put twenty percent down, that, they can get a mortgage for two-twenty, two-hundred and eighteen, two-hundred and twenty, and that's based upon today's interest rates. One of the things that is problematic, and I'm sure you've run into this, as interest rates rise, affordability goes down, and it becomes more and more complicated. So, but based upon four and a half percent on a thirty-year mortgage, which is about what the current thirty-year mortgage rate is going, they can borrow two-hundred and twenty. If you go to a different style of mortgage, if we're a variable rate mortgage, ten ones, for instance, which seems popular today, ten-year fixed, one-year variable, most people stay away from them, but most people stay in the house seven years, so people do look at that as an option. That type of mortgage runs three to three and a quarter, which allows them to borrow more money, and they would qualify for that. So by looking at it and trying to work with your new inclusionary, this would be, I think, the first time, I think it's a new bylaw, be the first time that anybody's attempted to work with it. That's what David would like to try to do, and looking for input. One of the questions that we have is, is that it's pretty simple to understand what the threshold is for low-income housing, which is currently sixty-four thousand, but what I don't know is if assets are considered in that. So, I mean, a person could have inherited money, a person can get a gift for money, wholly different options to be able to create an affordable unit for different types of people that would be out there in the marketplace. But anyways, new housing that qualifies for affordable is wicked hard to do. We're starting to approach, it's really difficult for contractors to build less than four hundred when you start looking at all of the costs that are associated with new construction, and we're coming to five hundred. So that's scary to me. Scary to how are our children going to buy houses, and who's going to be able to afford them? And as it is now, Southampton, I think, has the second highest per-family capital income other than Long Meadow in Western Mass. So it's kind of turned into, if you look around, a lot of big houses on lots, and pretty desirable community. So anyways, looking for, I think we're looking for input. I think that is the type of bylaw, an inclusionary bylaw, that allows the town to start to move towards getting some affordable housing in. This would be the first attempt to at least get two units in, and David thinks he can do it. But, you know, I guess if anybody has comments on the planning board, we'd be interested. But the other question I have is, is who screens the customer for the property? And it's not clear. We're not really quite sure how that works. Do, obviously...
Isn't it the housing partnership, as I understand, or no?
No, it's not. I have to smile.
Okay.
When you say that this is the best one. Because I've worked with a lot of inclusionary bylaws, and none of them work.
Yes.
And none of them work for subdivisions, and none of them work for detached single-family homes.
Correct.
They just don't work. They don't lend themselves to that. You actually, we'll have to hire somebody. There's a standard, and I can, if you give me your card, I can email it to you.
Okay.
Because any of these units are going to have to be approved units by the state under the LID program, the local initiative.
Okay.
To have them qualify as affordable housing units, because that's what this whole thing is to do, is to try to increase your affordable housing units and to raise the percentage.
Right.
There is a, quite a process that you have to go through to market these and to monitor them ongoing, because once these units are sold, it's supposed to be kept affordable, you know, as, as time goes on.
As a deed restriction, and I'm...
Correct. But there has to be some monitoring relative to that to make sure that happens.
Yep.
We, in fact, just went through the training at my agency to be certified, to conduct I was blown away by how much work it is, to the point where I'm not sure, well, this one, I'm not going to do it, because it's a lot of work. And I've been working with this in another community, similar type project, it was actually it's a multifamily, it was a condo project, and they were looking at how much it was going to cost to hire an entity to come in and do the monitoring and to do the advertising, the solicitation that you need to go through to identify and get prospective buyers. And it was, they found it just to be, you know, cost prohibitive.
Right.
There are a couple of other agencies and entities that you can hire to do that. The problem that I see with subdivisions and lots is which lots are you going to be designating as the affordable lots? How much are those going to be selling for to meet the affordable rate? Because chances are, it's, it might be a lot owner and not necessarily somebody building a house. Some developers don't actually develop the houses, they build the road, they sell the lots. And so, and if you look at it, there is some kind of timing mechanism in here that you need to provide the affordable units as you're building the, the market rate units. But the question then is, well, what if you don't find a buyer for them? What if you can't sell those, those affordable lots? Does that stop the whole project, once you've reached that threshold for the number of market rate units that you could build? I have not thoroughly briefed myself on your bylaw, but I know it's similar to a lot of other ones that communities in the area have adopted, and we're all going to have the same problem. Even gets more convoluted if you try to do the lieu of payment thing. That's even, even more difficult. So I'm heartened by the fact that you think you can make this work.
I'm pretty sure we can. I bet you will have people knocking down the doors.
Before you get off that subject, I do remember, because this is the first time, and it's been quite a while since that bylaw was enacted, but the payment and lieu was one option. There was also land swap of some sort that was also an option, I thought, in there. And not, not that they, that was the focus of the, in the spirit of the zoning, but it was options.
Yep.
That's what I remember without reading it, was the payment. And also, if you bought land somewhere else in a different part of town, it was like a land swap to kind of accomplish the, the same idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, you're in lieu of payment. Says the money goes into a affordable housing trust, which you don't have. I'm going to bet you don't have.
No, the housing partnership has the...
Yeah, and that's another whole different thing in terms of monitoring and administration. It's a lot of work to do this. I went through a couple of workshops, and it's a lot of work to do this. You also have, refer to a chart to determine the lieu of fee payment, but I don't see the chart in here, so I have no idea how that's, that's actually calculated. Will this require any waivers or variances in order to meet?
Special permit.
You don't know yet. Okay. That's, that's important to know.
Yeah, we, we don't know yet.
And I'm not sure if this bylaw has a waiver provision in there, or if you're going to have to go the variance route, if there are certain aspects of it that you can't comply with. That's something you'll need to take a look at.
Larry, can I, can, we actually looked at all of that, the land, swapping land out, donating money. None of that works as well as the options. So in any inclusionary zoning bylaw that they created, it allowed for, for every affordable unit that was created, there would be two additional lots. That's how you do it. Because basically, David's going to build two units for nothing.
Well, that, that's how you get the extra money to underwrite and subsidize the affordable units.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's a good thing. A lot of bylaws do not have that provision in there.
Outstanding. Outstanding. It's the best I've seen. I, I, you know, otherwise, we wouldn't even be talking about it. We'd be talking about nine-lot subdivision. It happens everywhere. As soon as they get in, they start looking at the bylaws, and they run. They say, no, thank you, I won't pay you any more than this, because they, but in order to create affordable housing, there has to be incentives to be able to do it. And this does it to the extent that it is, by looking, but if we've looked at it pretty closely, by looking at it, you can do the two units, because it would be required based upon the inclusionary zoning that you've created, and be able to...
Do they allow the condex style in this community?
With a special permit.
Okay.
On a RN zoning. So this is RN. And, and the condex that we're talking about is going to look like the rest of the houses out there. They're going to be beautiful. You are not going to be able to know, except for you'll look at the place, and there'll be two-car garages on each, and it'll be one building. And they, we looked at some that were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred square feet, three bedrooms. The other part, Larry, that we have an issue with, and that you should be aware of, is that the nitrate load, which says that you can only put four bedrooms per acre. So that is a create, that is a... bedrooms per acre. So, that is a create, that is a, so in order to get six on this duplex, we have to create a lot that's an acre and sixty thousand square feet-
Yep.
-that will meet the requirements for the, the state health regulations.
Do you know offhand where the provision is for condenses?
Should be in the RN section, in the front of the, I would say.
I don't see it in the table, but I, I trust that you found it someplace. Well, for singles, twos, multifamilies, so are you using the condex as a form of a two-family?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And will that condex comply with the requirements for a two-family?
Yes.
Okay. And this is on sewer?
No. Town water and septic, yeah.
They have town water, but septic.
There's no sewer in Southampton unless you happen to be on East Hampton's town line, yeah?
Yeah.
But actually, you know-
So, what should be looking for from the board tonight?
Well, I, I'm-
They can't give you any kind of tacit approval or anything.
No, no. We're-
You've got to come in with a, a plan and a design and show them that you, it complies with it and go through that whole process.
We're, we're interested in the spirit of creating affordable and working with the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And actually, David has looked at this property as something where there's a little bit for everybody in it. There's a lot of open space that could be donated back to the town, as much as two-thirds of it as part of the thing. Then there's also the affordable housing that's created. And the plan itself, because the lots are a little bit smaller than a lot of the residential rural that has been built up. If you follow Southampton on the ex, the exterior Southampton, it's residential rural, which is one hundred seventy-five feet of frontage, sixty thousand square feet. So, those type of lots have encouraged three thousand, four thousand square foot homes at numbers that are really high. These were, he's looking at a different target.
Sure.
His target is a lower number, because the lots are going to be smaller. They're going to be nice. They're going to be well-done, because you can't even, when I say lower, they're between four and five. Now, the other ones are between five and six and, and seven and, and more. So, they're going to have, but you have to do nice stuff in order to be able to sell them on the market. So anyways, David's creation is, is that there's, there's a little bit in it for everything, but we're interested in, is it worth, David, to go through the stress of working with the people that are going to be, I don't, I don't know if Valley CDC does that as well, because they tend to be involved, and they may be already qualified. I'm not really sure. They're out in Northampton.
Yeah.
I bet you they are, but I don't know, I don't know that for sure. But one of the things is, is that it takes some effort to create a project that's going to be attractive to be able to be saleable. And we're looking for, is that-
It might be nice if we talked about it.
Does that work for, for the planning board who created this bylaw? And, you know, is it of interest, or is there something else that, that you want to mention that you think would be important?
Judging by the number of people in the room, I think we'll find that out.
Okay. I'm sure you will.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Yeah.
David, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. David Garski, grew up just down the street on forty-one Colespring Road. Land budding, that was my grandmother's land. Learned to swim right there. This is my backyard. For me, I'd rather build in the woods, which were just off the road, than building in the farmland and using up the farmland. And that, this rest of this property, it's gravelly there, and the trees never really grew that great there. It's not a great woods back there. The oak trees are kind of spindly, and there are some oak trees behind Roger Balls. So, to me, it's a, Frank Wayne had approached, my brother and myself, probably back around two thousand, he wanted to do a development there. He wanted a condo project, and he also thought some of those lots would be large lots. Maybe people would do horse barns or something like that, ten-acre lots. I'm not going to plan to do that with the rest of that land. I'd consider donating the rest of that land to the town, fifty-some-odd acres. We can see, right there, that, that little wedge, that's in front of Edward Avenue. That's where the roadway would go in.
So, that's a dip in the road?
No, the, the dip is down below. That's, the hill is, yes, that's, that's the low spot.
Right.
So, we wouldn't be able to build down that section. So, coming in and a thousand feet, you can see where it jogs out there. That's about as far as the development would go. And the rest of that whole big property, I have a piece of property that abuts that. That was my grandmother's property, and my cousins now own another property where there was a, where the brook goes around there, so.
I'm sorry, how far down would the, how long down would the development be?
I mean, we don't know exact, I mean, we don't have any plan yet. But you see how far out goes? There's a big parcel up there. Maybe you'll go a little bit past there. That, that's probably as far as it can go. A thousand feet is what we can, we can go. The, there's enough water pressure there that we can have town, town water. But you can see that whole big section is just wooded area that we probably would, I don't know if the town, how things would go with the towns. I mean, I'm not a multimillionaire. You know, I've got to make money on this. I've got people, we're, we're building houses now that are, it's like senior housing, ranch houses that I'm building houses, houses people in their seventies are buying. And they're able to stay there probably the rest of their life. The other side, I got a little, that plan that you have, I have, the other side, I've got the young couples, the one I'm doing right now in Moosebrook. He's out of the military. She's a firefighter. Got a young family. She's pregnant. So, we're hitting that side with the small colonials that aren't huge, twenty-seven hundred square foot. They're two thousand to twenty-four hundred square feet. But those are getting out of the three hundred thousand dollar range. They're pushing over the four hundred thousand mark. Lumber has gone skyrocketed. And with everything that's happened in the country with hurricanes and stuff, we don't see prices going down. So, I'm trying to make this affordable as I can. Affordable now is over three hundred thousand dollars for a regular house, but we've got the demand there where we've got seniors that want to be out of those large houses and in their own home and on one floor. So, there's, there's a demand for what I want to do. I'm not planning on doing McMansions there, that type of thing.
Before you leave the podium, is there, in, before I open it up for public questions, any questions from the board to either David or Mark, Bob?
I'll just answer, it is the Springfield numbers you have to use. And it does skew everything.
Yes.
But that's what you have to use.
Which are the same, if you go through the-
Correct. That's where, that's where the numbers come from. Springfield, Southampton, Amherst, it's all the same number.
Okay. At this point, rather than have people shuffling back and forth to the podium, and I think the acoustics in here are, can, can you hear if someone just stands up and speaks? Is, will they be able to hear the, the questions?
You should still have to go up to the microphone.
Okay. So, if, if anyone, and David, stand there, you know, don't sit down, but if there's anyone from the public that would like, have a question about what's going on regarding the property, come forward, state your name and address, ask your question, and David or Mark will respond as best they can. Be bashful.
Hi. Diana Federman, Three Birchwood Drive.
How do you spell the last name?
F.E.D.E.R.M.A.N.
Thank you.
I feel like this informal discussion has gotten very specific very quickly, and I'd just like to back it up a little bit and ask the board if you received a letter from the Conservation Commission about this land?
I received an email regarding it and just asking to keep the Conservation Commission posted about what's going on. Really, without any definitive or sub, you know, subplans before us, there's really not much that, that we are doing here, other than just informational only. And Marla Hank from Conservation is here.
Mm-hmm.
If, if Marla has any questions, I would certainly expect she would come forward.
Well, we've been neighbors of this land for almost thirty years, and I'd just like to say it's very beautiful, as Mr. Garski said. And there are a lot of people in town who would like to see it protected, remain protected, as it has been under Chapter sixty-one. And, you know, an effort made by the Conservation Commission, by the boards in town, to do your best, really to meet, meet the demands of the townspeople who have said in the master plan that their number-one priority is to preserve open space. So, I really appreciate what you said about trying to, you know, save a lot of it. I wonder if the town doesn't have a prerogative to take action to save some of it. And just keep that in mind, that, you know, there was this big tax break for a long time, and what is the trade-off for that, so?
That's one of the pros of the Chapter sixty-one program, which is just, it's just temporary.
Mm-hmm.
It's not permanent, and it does give them a tax break for a period of time. And at the end of that time, at the end of the management plan, they do have the ability to take it out of that program.
I guess I'm thinking about the ethics of the whole thing.
I understand that. I'm not a big fan of Chapter sixty-one just because of that, because it is just temporary. But nonetheless, that's the way this program is set up. You're complying with it, and that's, that, that's life. I guess my question might be, Conservation?
Marla, you want to come up?
Is there a sentiment for the town to acquire the property? Does the town have the money to acquire the property?
We don't have the house.
Okay.
Jim, town have any money to, have they got a lot of reserves to buy open-spaced land?
Well, there's community preservation, which is one of the avenues that you could put a, put a proposal in front of. Sure that I'm not sure what else there would be.
That's about it.
That's all.
I could just add that the Kestrel Land Trust has been at selectable meetings and has expressed interest in it and has been very supportive. They came up with several avenues for trying to save the land.
Well, I would expect, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marla, if, if Conservation is strongly for protecting that in its entirety, you're, you're the, your committee is the catalyst to get that moving, correct?
It would be that someone would have to come to us specifically to address that. But we also have to understand that we have to be practical, and that if someone would donate two-thirds of a property, that particular property, which it doesn't show up on that map, is crisscrossed with streams. Mark had alluded to it coming down at the lower portion there. But the whole back part of it is crisscrossed, so there'd be a lot of work building in that area. Nevertheless, if someone donates two-thirds of a large property as, you know, conservation plan, that's certainly easier on the town than to then have to come up with the money to buy it. But that said, a number of properties, we have been speaking with the Kestrel Land Trust and Winding River, other land trusts. There is some amount, but not too much, in the community preservation for open space. So, we are interested in working with people. You know, we understand we can't purchase every square inch of town that isn't yet built, however much I might want to personally. But if working with people, two-thirds of it is better than none of it, certainly.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dan Pellegrini, seventy-six Crookledge Road, also a member of the Finance Committee here in town. I think Larry is spot on. It is temporary, but the one caveat that the town does have is the right of refusal on buying the property. So, there are monies that can be used, and, and I think, again, that, that's an option. The one thing I would request is that the planning board look at the policies. In the past, we've approved subdivisions that are on land that's Chapter sixty-one. The effect of that is that the town can then not afford the land afterwards. So, if you go ahead and approve the property, we can't afford it if the property stays unapproved. So, last subdivision, not the one that I put in, the one prior to me, was in Chapter sixty-one. And as the road was finished, each lot was released from sixty-one. Town has no ability at that point to buy that property, because it's now at a hundred-and-so-mile thousand for a building lot, opposed to the raw property value, which is somewhere in the three, four hundred thousand dollar range.
That's one of the other problems of the Chapter sixty-one program, is that happens. Plus, the board does not have the ability oftentimes to deny a project if it complies with all of your requirements. And oftentimes, you'll find a property owner will come in and get the project approved with probably no intent of actually building the development, but it has jack the value up.
Correct. Correct. And, and that is something that could be thwarted with a bylaw, and, and it's something that the town should have the right of first refusal on, since we've foregone our tax money. And sitting on the Finance Committee, I know the train wreck that we have coming down the track next year financially in this town, so we need to be prudent. And additionally, those CP, what are they, CPA? Yeah, those, those funds only can be used for certain things, and we do have a nice little treasure trove of that, and that is our tax money. So, again, if the town is really serious about it, we can go at that. Now, I'm going to flip the other hat on, because I am in David's shoes, and it is ridiculous to build. It is very expensive to put in a road. It's absolutely astronomical to build a house. And, and I, Mr. Cannon, I, I respect your opinion, but I've looked at that bylaw up and down, and I just, I'm struggling to see how you can make that work other than buying out on it.
Thank you.
No, that's fine. I, I hope so. I hope so, because it drives more, it drives more demand in town, but it's a very difficult one, and it is getting very expensive to build in town. So, we've really got to look at where we want to be as a town and, and stop tightening the noose around builders' necks, because it's just going to, if people are going to continue buying town, it's just going to increase the property values. That, that's the net effect, because to the point that's going on around town, the economy's good. People are moving away from Long Meadow. This is one of the hottest towns in, in the area, and people can afford six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar houses. So, we've just got to have a balance act.
Thank you. Anyone else? Barbara?
Good evening. Barbara Laflambe, Twenty Cook Road. The question that was just asked was, does the town have money? No, we're not rolling in money by any stretch of the imagination. Things are very tight. And yes, the town does have some community preservation funds that are very nice to have. We've been very conservative in how the town has utilized those funds, being considerate of the four areas that the town is authorized to use that money in. So, it's very important that the conserva, that the community preservation follows the guidelines to find other entities to partner with, to leverage the funds that are taxed, are generated from the community preservation. And we have been able to do that. I worked on a project, took four years, worked with the Barnes-Aquifer Protection Commission. The project had a value of over a million dollars, and as I began to talk about that, some people said I was nuts. There's no way that the town could possibly afford that. Well, it turned out, even though it took a long time, with the help of the Winding River Land Trust, the Kestrel Trust, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Community Preservation Commission, the town of East Hampton, we formed kind of a working partnership where the three major entities got grants, and we worked together. And this project was a success. We closed on it this last June thirtieth. The town has, in its ownership, direct ownership, twenty-five- The town has, in its ownership, direct ownership, twenty-five-point-six-three acres that we never would have had if it hadn't taken the effort of a partnership. And that's what we need to do with parcels such as this. And yes, we understand, as Marla says, that we can't preserve every piece. And yes, we also understand that there has to be affordable housing for our kids and our grandkids. So it's a balance. These things are negotiated, and I think that's important to understand. But don't just say it can't be done, because there are ways to do it. And we've just demonstrated in Southampton that it can be done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. April West, Fifty-four Strong Road. When Mark spoke, Mark Reed spoke. He mentioned that, besides due diligence, that, David, you'll be purchasing this with clear title. Clear title means getting rid of the Chapter sixty-one tax lien. So I just want to be clear that the town, if a subdivision is allowed by the Planning Board, that the town will realize the appropriate taxes for the Chapter sixty-one tax lien, the rollback or the conveyance tax. Thank you.
Martha, would you like to speak to that at all? No, Martha? From the assessor's office? No. I hate to put you on the spot.
What address do I use?
Well, when something's taken out of--
Okay, so I don't need an address.
You're working in Board of Assessor's Office.
Martha Lemius, Assistant Assessor for the Town of Southampton. So it is the Board, in my understanding, that it's up to the owner of the property currently to file a right of first refusal with the Board of Selectmen, Planning, Conservation, and the Assessor's Office. That has not happened, so I think right now, all we can do is speculate what the owner[750.72][750.75]intends to do with the property. If he sells it, and the new owner wants to keep the land in chapter land, he can file an affidavit, and the land will stay with the new lien created. But it's also up to the current owner to release the liens, to pay the rollback. The conveyance tax would happen, only if the new owner decides to take the land out of chapter land within the, I forget the time period.
Five years.
Five years. So it's to avoid that happening, to avoid the new owner buying the property and then taking it out right away. It's a steeper penalty than the rollback, so that's why they have the conveyance tax. The rollback would be on the current owner to take care of it.
Does anybody know how much time is left on the current approved forestry manager? It's forestry, right?
Yep, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Oh. Almost out.
It's almost up, yeah. So at that point, I think what we would do if the land doesn't sell is they just come out of chapter land. If they haven't filed a right of first refusal, that would trigger the intent. The right of first refusal even happens, I've been going over this constantly, and now I can't get my facts straight.
It's a very, very fast time track for the town to exercise that--
Hundred-and-twenty days?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's hundred-and-twenty days to get it through town meeting, to vote to authorize the funds to acquire it.
Yes. Yes. It's out.
Well, somebody can look into that.
Yeah, I, yeah.
My understanding is it's a really, really quick timeframe. It's an unreasonably quick timeframe.
Thank you, Martha. Marla?
Can you hear, I think this like a play.
Yes, I do.
Seriously?
If I pass out, roll me out the door. Thank you. Marla Hank, Gilbert Road, Conservation Commission. I want to make it clear, and I had sent the letter, including with two attachments with letters, you know, from a butters, that, yes, the Conservation Commission is interested in this property, as well as several others. However, we're working and speaking with the Kestrel and other land trusts, we need to be able to work with people. So in the case where, and again, it's theoretical, they're just talking informational, but something that Mr. Garska, again, had suggested, possibly donating part of it, that's a win-win. He gets some, you know, development. We don't have to come up with extra money to do it, but land is preserved. You know, it's a huge parcel, you know, as I had mentioned before, with the water, with wildlife. We want to try to preserve that, but we're also reasonably, we can't stop every single, as I had mentioned before. But yes, we are interested in it. And so if Mr. Garska decides, I just won the lottery, here you go, Conservation Commission, we'll be very happy and say thank you. But it's trying to be practical, but yes, we're interested in that. I want to make that clear.
Thank you. Bob, do you have something else to say?
Yeah, I just want to add that the, David has done this before in East Hampton on Paul Street. There was thirty, forty acres there, and put in nine building lots, and then donated the rest to the Pascomic Trust. They have now put walking trails down to the, down to the manhattan, and they're used quite often by people that are in East Hampton. So he's done this before. It makes all the sense in the world to offer most of it, because most of it, frankly, you can't do any more than a thousand feet anyways. So ideally, there is a little bit for everybody, and the only thing I wanted to, see, we have a lot of talk about, we like the town as it is, and everybody likes it as it is, and nobody really wants changes. But I would say that there's something that's very disturbing to me, as a guy in the real estate business. Who's looking out for the next generation? Where are they going to live? What are they going to afford? We've already done a really bad job of regulating zoning and also building codes, so nobody can afford to buy them. We're putting sprinkler systems in houses in North Hampton. Fifteen thousand dollars, not one extra square foot for them. I'd like to know who's going to look out for them? Who's going to have opportunities for them? And you just can't buy every piece of land. You have to have open space. You have to have housing that helps keep stability, price stability. Massachusetts is going to run into a problem. We've got a good economy right now. People are coming here to work. And if you don't keep price stability, meaning that we need three thousand units a year to keep price stability, we're not creating that many. So you have, in addition to the costs rising, the pressures of the marketplace, where supply and demand, and there's nothing you can do about supply and demand, other than have demand and supply in balance. That's the best thing that we all can do for price stability for the next generation and the generations after that.
Thank you. Is there anything else we need to cover on this?
Just one thing.
Go ahead.
April West, Fifty-four Strong Road. I've been doing a lot of research on Chapter sixty-one, so this kind of clears things up a little. If the land is being sold, it is the buyer's intent at the time of the purchase that will determine if the land, if the sale is for conversion or not. If the intent of the buyer is to convert the property at any time in the future, not just within one year of being taxed under the program, then that sale is one for conversion. For example, if the buyer purchases the property with the intent to build houses three years from the date of the sale, this would be considered a sale for conversion. And that's how you figure the taxes. Thank you.
I would just like to make one more comment about town finances and looking out for all the poor people and everything that realtors always do. We, as a town, could buy that thirty percent and sell it, and then the town would get the money, you know? And the fifty percent that's saved, or whatever, would, you know, wouldn't be priced at the same amount, but why would the town just leave that on the table, when you could, you know, sell it and put it in our coffers and benefit the young people, improve the schools and all that?
So the town would be the developer?
Yeah, I'm not sure the town's--
Well, the town could--
Expertise do you have?
Land-flipping business.
That thirty percent, you know, if the town sold it, they would have the money. Sold it to a developer, then the town would benefit, instead of just the developers. Makes sense to me.
Janet Kane, Eighty-three Glendale Road, Board of Assessors. I'm studying my Chapter sixty-one program document here, from the UMass Extension. And it does say the option for first right of, or the right of first refusal must be exercised by the municipality within a hundred and twenty days of receiving a notice from the owner that complies with the law. After exercising the first refusal option, the land must be acquired by the municipality within ninety days, unless an extension is agreed upon.
Thank you.
But I believe that requires a town meeting action within a hundred and twenty days.
Right.
Yes.
Any comments from the Board? Questions? Larry, you pretty much--
I can't wait.
Well, that--
I mean, I think inclusionary zoning is a terrific thing. I think it's a really good idea.
Complex.
Very altruistic. And if you can make it work, I'd love to see it. I think that's great.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for, did you have something else, David?
Well, I know the town needs money. I don't know what the tax is on that property right now, but I don't know how many houses we'd get, ten to twenty houses on there. Think of how much tax money you'd be getting on that property. If it stayed as it is, you wouldn't be getting that money. And we're trying to use, to me, it's much better to develop a piece of property that's close to the road, instead of developing our nice farmland. And to me, that's gravel. The brooks are way in the back. I won't be going near brooks where the development is. That's all a gravel bank there. So that's, to me, perfect place to build a house. That's important to me also. I'm building right now in a ledge, and it's tough. So building, finding good building lots is not easy anymore. And that's a piece of property that the glaciers left us, nice gravel on top. It's ideal to me.
Thank you, David. That being said, we'll go on to our next agenda item here, if anybody doesn't have any other objections. Thank you, Mark, David, Bob, and residents for coming forward. Thank you.
Can you get me his card?
Yes.
No. Okay, you have a card, though? I'll get you a mail to both of you. The administration of it is very different. I was shocked, quite frankly. I thought it would be really easy. Okay, very good. Thanks, David. Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Larry Smith. He's here. On our ongoing discussions about drafts of revisions of bylaws going forward. And before we start, I thought we'd get an update. I spoke to you after the town meeting, when the moratorium for marijuana was passed. And what's the latest on that? We're still waiting for the last set of regs coming through from the CCC?
The CCC submitted their draft regs, their first shot at it. They held a series of listening sessions around the state. I attended a couple of them. They're now going back and trying to rework a number of things that came up during those listening sessions, but they're still required, you know, by the statute, to submit their final regulations within a month. And I think it's April fifteenth, people can start applying for licenses, and they can start issuing them on June first.
Okay. Given that, when's the soonest we could get a draft, so we can get the ball rolling here?
Well, we, in our most recent round of DLTA funding, District Local Technical Assistance, that's money the state provides, the regional planning agencies provide technical assistance to their towns. And there were three communities that submitted requests for assistance in developing a retail, great, thank you, a retail marijuana bylaw ordinance. It was the City of Springfield, Town of Covington, and the Town of Belchertown. And so we decided to lump those together, and we're going to work with those three communities to develop a model bylaw that hopefully will be able to apply to other communities.
And timeframe?
And you voted yes?
Yeah.
Timeframe is, that's probably going to start relatively quickly, because there's such pressure to do something about it.
Jim, you said town meeting is planned for when?
It's the first week in May, so I can give you a date.
I would be surprised if there's something done by then, completed by then.
May first, I believe, is the, is the annual town meeting, and we need warrant articles to be submitted, I believe, four weeks ahead of that. So we're looking at the end of March.
So--
I mean, you did do the moratorium.
Yes.
The moratorium you did until, what, December?
Yes.
December.
Yeah.
So that should provide you a buffer.
So you don't think we can roll this out in time, in public hearing and all, before a town meeting?
I'm not sure. I can't guarantee that.
I mean, we can--
There's a lot of stuff going on.
As we said before, we can put that on the warrant. But then we vote that it hasn't been passed.
That's true. Yeah, you can reserve an article for it, a slot board. I mean, as I envision this working out, is we will likely develop a series of land-use categories, one being grow facilities, you know, manufacturing and production, and one being retail. And then if the state does pursue it, there'll be a section for on-premises consumption. And so then it's a matter of determining what districts do you want those to go in. Obviously, the production grow facilities is probably going in your industrial areas. You're, depending on what the attitude of the community is, if you're going to be doing the retail, that probably would go in one of your business zones, although some communities are sticking it in their industrial zones, just to get it out of sight. There's a basic sentiment from the state that you shouldn't be treating these much differently than you treat a package store. Because they see similarities between the two. And the industry is really aggressive. That's the one thing I've found from all the meetings that I went to. They're very aggressive. I would not be surprised if some of them challenge some of the moratoriums.
We have no jurisdiction, this Board, for how many so-called establishments? Is that Board of Selectmen or Board of--
You can do it in your zoning bylaw. You can limit it to a certain number. If it's less than twenty percent of the number of package stores that you have in town now, you have to do a public, another public vote on it. If it's twenty-one percent or more, you don't have to do a vote on it. So you can pick a number.
Okay.
But then it's also, you know, adopting setbacks, you know, so many feet from schools, so many feet from playgrounds, so many feet from churches, or whatever.
That seems, most of the ones I've been reading, following it in the newspapers and such, the media, that seems to be pretty standard, what's going on there.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, some communities are using the three hundred feet. Some communities don't see really any reason, you know, why to have any setbacks. Some communities are adopting, or talking about setbacks that are so restrictive, you may not be able to find a parcel in town to fit it on. And that would be, that would be a problem. Those are the communities I think will really run into trouble. I mean, the reality is, it passed, the referendum passed, the ballot issue passed. I mean, the reality is, it passed, the referendum passed, the ballot issue passed. Many towns voted for it. Many towns voted against it. It's a lot easier if you voted no to adopt the zoning to prohibit it than it is to adopt the zoning to regulate it.
It sounds to me like it's going to be moving parts going along, too. There's going to be a lot of tweaking of it as you go forward.
Well, it's like, it's like I always say, it's like your inclusionary zoning bylaw. It looks great on paper, but you don't know how it's going to work until the first application comes to the door. And you actually have to run it through the process. And that's when you realize, "Oh, yeah, we forgot that," type thing. The one thing I find really interesting is the push to allow farmers to grow it as a cash crop. Most other grow facilities are in buildings, like Butler Buildings. It's very heavily climate controlled. It's, you know, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, fifty-two weeks a year. The lighting is all, it's all, you know, artificial lighting in the light. And it's got a lot of really, a lot of security is required for it, to make it safe and make it impenetrable from getting, from theft and being broken into. And I'm not sure how that works if somebody's just going to be planting it in their field, whether they'll be able to comply with the requirements for securing the site against unauthorized entry.
I thought a lot of them were greenhouses, or going to be that type of stuff for protection, rather than open fields, no?
I've heard testimony from both. I mean, there's a real strong farm contingent, especially from Franklin County. All of Franklin County voted yes. And a lot of that was because there are a lot of small farms. And if you look at the value of crops, and they're going to convert some cornfields to marijuana fields, they may realize more profit. I'm just not sure how that's going to work. And the state's still a little bit up in the air on that.
All right, well, thanks for the update. And when you get something solid, just let us know.
As drafts come out, we'll disseminate them so you can take a look at it.
We'll start the ball rolling. So proceed with your other.
Okay, so for the zoning, what I'm getting into now is Section Five, which is the Table of Use Regulations. It's really slow-going, working from a document that you don't have in Word format. So it's a matter of taking it as a PDF and modifying it. And that, that takes time, especially when it's a table, because you almost have to totally reconstruct it. So that's what I've been working on for the last week and a half. But I had an epiphany, and I have a son that lives in Mexico outside of Tijuana. And every Christmas, from Christmas to New Year's, my wife and I go down and visit him for Christmas, and we spend a week or ten days down, down there. And we went down there this year, and my wife had to come back on New Year's to teach, so I stayed a few extra days, had some dental work done.
In Mexico?
Yeah. Really inexpensive.
Yeah.
It's like less than half the cost. But anyway, so my wife comes back up here, and it's, you've got that wonderful one-degree weather, and we have, she found some pipes that's frozen in the house in our absence over the weekend alike. And so the day before I had to go back, my son and I went down to the Wine Valley in Mexico. We're sitting at one of the vineyards out on the patio, sampling the wine, shorts with eighty-plus degree breeze and a beautiful landscape. So I had to fly home the next day, and we're in the one-degree weather, and we had that snowstorm that came, I think it was on January fourth. And so we, I flew in, and of course, it was dark, so I had to go out and rev up the snow blower and start blowing the snow. And of course, the snow blower broke halfway through. And so as my wife and I are out there with our shovels, shoveling the snow in the dark, we both kind of looked at each other and said, "Why are we doing this?" So we're retiring. We both put in, I'm going to be retiring at the end of June as is Barbara. So I only have a few months left here. I did give them, you know, six months, so they, the idea was supposed to be, we had decided last June to hire another land use planner with a municipal black background, but didn't get around, they didn't get around to doing it until Christmas. So they just did hire a new woman who's going to be starting in a couple of weeks. And why, the initial plan was to have her sitting next to me, because the workload has gotten, our municipal assistance program has really gotten popular. We started out with one town. We now have five, and we're up to seven. We have two other ones that are considering joining it as well. So now, instead of sitting next to me, she'll be sitting in this chair. So I'll be bringing her around as we go. One of the things is, I still want to continue to work on your bylaw between now and then. You are every first and third Wednesdays? So I'm going to start blocking those out, so that I can come in on a more regular basis and try to get as many of the chapters done as I can. The new person coming on is not a municipal planner, per se. She works for a nonprofit down in Hartford in Connecticut, doing, developing village centers and village center revitalization. She's also on the planning board of Storrs, Connecticut. Storrs is where Yukon is, sort of like Amherst, but not, not as big as Amherst. So she does, she does sit on your side of the table, so she does have that, that background as well. So we'll see how that works out.
So she'll be taking over your duties at PVPC?
Yes.
Okay. And you just had, did Chris Curtis just leave?
Yes.
So you've got some.
Well, the crazy thing was, when I got back and we decided to retire, after, the day after shoveling the snow, I went to the State Retirement Board and ran the numbers, and they said, "Oh, I've maxed out on what I can retire with." In fact, I maxed out a year and a half ago. That's one of those things. So they said, you know, "I could, I could retire tomorrow." Continue to work, and he isn't going to make me any more, any more money, so.
Well, congratulations.
It's mixed feelings. I enjoy doing this a whole lot.
I know you do. You're very good at it, too.
But, so I think our plan is to spend the winters with one son in Mexico and spend the summers with my grandson up in Greenfield.
Good for you. Any moonlighting on the side with this, or probably not?
I'll pop you.
So what have we got tonight? Is the Table of Use you're working on?
Yeah, that's what I, I don't have anything to give to you. I had a meeting in East Long Island this afternoon, so I wasn't able to get back. My copy's off, but I will do that.
So the next time you show, let me know, and you'll have your new assistant with you then?
I believe by your next meeting. I think she's starting the fifth, and your next meeting is the seventh.
Right. So she'll be able to bring, when we bring a package to town meeting, do you think there's anything we can get for May this year or not?
The marijuana?
No. Well, not only marijuana, but I mean, the sections we've already.
The one thing, and I was thinking strategy, how to do this. And, because we've got a couple of things. We're reformatting everything. We're trying to get the numbers all consistent and all of that.
Yeah.
And we're also trying to improve it, and revise it, and beef it up as we go along. So I'm thinking of maybe it's wise to take it in two steps. The first step would be just to do the reformatting, meaning take what you have now.
Yep.
Don't make any changes to the text of it, but just reformat it. And so that when you go to town meeting, you can say.
It's easier.
We're not changing anything to this, we're just changing the numbering of it.
Exactly.
And so that should go through relatively easily. And then you can come back with the individual section with the substantial changes and go through those.
Does it necessarily have to go in consecutive order, so to speak? Or can you cherry pick different sections that are relatively easy to, to get approval on and whatever?
Well, we had talked about that previously, and the way zoning is set up, all the sections kind of interrelate and refer back and forth to each other. And so it's really difficult to do it like that. I mean, my suggestion is, and I also, my suggestion is you take it to town meeting when you're done with it, but you do it maybe in individual articles. So you're dealing with parking separately, and you're dealing with it. And the reason I like that strategy is because if you take it as just a total document with one vote up or one vote down, you may love it, except for the parking section. And you may love it, except for the sign section. And you may love it, except for the inclusionary zoning section. And so you'll all vote no, even though you like most of it, but because of that one thing. So if you take it individually, you can kind of tweak it and make it a little bit better.
But wouldn't that give us the same problem if, if we have all different sections?
No.
And it's all intertwined?
Some get approved.
And some get approved and some don't?
My point being, when you vote for the parking, he's going to vote no.
Yeah.
They're going to vote yes.
Okay, so the parking passes.
They're saying it'll be all pass when you.
He's going to vote no, they're going to vote yes.
Okay, but let's say the signs fail.
Yeah.
And then the next one passes, and two more fail. How do you mix all that when they're intertwined? Let's say you leave the town meeting and not all of them passed.
That's the problem.
Right, okay.
That's why.
Is that two-thirds, by the way?
It's two-thirds. It's two-thirds.
Yeah.
Your chances of success are greater than doing it like that, as opposed to all or nothing.
All or nothing, yeah.
And are we able to make amendments on the floor?
Yes.
So, so if somebody doesn't like a section for a reason, we can amend it, and then hopefully get that passed and move on?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the way it would work would be, you know, let's say Paul does not like something about the parking. So Paul makes a motion at the town meeting floor to amend what he doesn't like. So there will be a vote on that. So you'll, so whether that motion to amend succeeds or fails, it's going to kind of indicate whether or not it's going to pass or not, when it's the final product. But that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way the process works. And it can be modified, and sometimes it's, you know, modified for the better.
All right, Larry, well, thank you.
Yes, this is very interesting.
They're, they're optimistic, very optimistic.
Yeah, they are. I mean, I, you know, suddenly, in a couple of other communities, we're dealing with projects like this. And there's one project that actually hadn't approved as an, as an inclusionary zoning project. And then they realized the little payments wasn't going to work, because they didn't have a housing trust, and they didn't know how to figure the money out. And then they didn't know how they're going to administer, how they're going to sell the units, what kind of lottery they had to do. And it got very complicated. And that's where we went back, and we actually went back and took a look at yours, because they were all, kind of came out of a model that the state did, that PVPC worked on. And they all have similar issues. Much easier to work out if it's a multifamily development or condo development. Really a little more difficult when you're selling individual lots.
Okay. Thank you, and good luck, and congratulate.
Thank you.
Barb, too?
Yeah, I will.
All right, moving along, I.
Thank you, Larry.
There, I don't have any, I don't have any communications. We're not going to be approving any minutes tonight, because we're pretty much caught up, with the exception of a couple. I do have a warrant that I need to have signed off on for VHB, and that was for the peer review for the Daniele residence on Moosebrook Road, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, which Mr. Daniele already paid us. So I need a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second, and further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll pass that down for your signatures. And then, Jim, I've been, PVPC is going to do the two minor changes on our zoning map, you know, changing the zones, like the one that was just recently done at town meeting over there on Middle Road.
Yeah.
That's Alexander Schoolcroft's property. And then also, there was a zone change for J and E, I think, a while back, that didn't make them the current map?
Not J and E, but that was personally for myself and my brother on.
What's the, what's the address of that parcel? Do you know?
Well, all I can tell you is at the corner of Valley Road and Brickyard, but I can't tell you the address number.
Okay, Valley and Brickyard. So to make a long story short, I contacted Tim Brennan at the suggestion of Larry Smith, and he said to ask him for permission. He's going to have some guys at PVPC that are going to do it for, for nothing to make these two minor changes on our map, which aren't, aren't flagged properly.
Yeah.
So we'll get that up to date. So that's in the works, and it probably should be done in a couple, three weeks or so.
Perfect.
Other than that, I don't have any other business unless someone else does.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.